Let's now run, we're on. Thank you.
They don't dare get me.
Evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 6th, 2013 Town Council Business Meeting. We will start, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the public is aware, Counselor Carmichael is on vacation and will not be here tonight. And our Recording Secretary for the Councillors, and actually for people in the audience as well during public comment, is not feeling well, so she's going to be watching from home and recording. So, if you want to talk, please come up to the microphone so that it gets recorded in a minute.
Loudly and clearly.
That being said, we will start our Public Forum on Non-Agenda Items Only at 7:02.
Bert Allen, Smith Garrison Room, 56 Smith Garrison Room. After studying the Master Plan, I had turned in Chapter 5 and 7 to Council members' email. Kind of self-explanatory, I'm kind of in favor of sticking with the Master Plan, but modifications, if council wants, you know, it's kind of up to them and the public at large. All I'm concerned is about the parking and the, so we don't beat it to doubt, the parking and the one-way traffic that the entitled, Chapter 7 of Transportation had said needed to be done. Where a new DOT study can be requested, we're at 180% of its engineered capacity, so it's 80% over its engineered capacity. So, one way would also take down on the daily beating on all the money we've placed in downtown. Also, there's another additional 50 parking spaces by one way in the traffic beside the library right there, going nose-first in. 50 spaces times $3,950 gives you more parking. That's all I wanted to say on that. And one other thing I want to bring to, so a lot of people have back in, goes back and forth about their blame in the council that nothing can be done about the school and some things.
There's a copy I sent out there. Oh, why do they have no electricity?
Wait for a second then.
Did you get those tissues then?
If you need, I'll see if yours is.
I do that.
There goes a good vodka.
All right. We're good, we're good. Mr. Allen.
A lot of the people do not understand that the council can't really do anything about the school. They're their own corporation. Newmarket is one corporation. The Administrator is the CEO. The council members are the trustees. Then you have your administrative heads, which are your CEOs, also your vice CEOs, police, fire, sewer, water. The high school is its own corporation. Basically, it's like Pepsi-Cola because they serve Pepsi on general lectures saying, oh, we'll give you a factory because you drink Coca-Cola on the line. The shareholders would absolutely go berserk, giving away the assets of that corporation. It's no different. That's why the town of Newmarket comes under Chapter 9 and the school comes under Chapter 9. Really, nothing they, nothing the poor council can do the way where the charter is written because they can just go tell you to go, it's like Braveheart said, you know, being nice about it. You have very few alternatives. They could force a situation where later down the line, four years down the line with water and everything that's coming together, that when you get to a certain point, that you could be forced into a Chapter 9 bankruptcy and the town cut up. Okay?
I don't think we're there yet, though, Ms. Allen.
We're not there yet, no, but doing a good job holding what's out. But a lot of people are blaming council. It's not proper to blame, it's not council's fault for what happens at the school. They're their own corporation. That's the problem. Yeah, they take input from us because it's good for the corporation to take input from them. A lot of people think that they own that school. That school is not deemed entitled to the town, it's not on its corporate books or sheet right there in the clerk's office. It's owned by that corporation. You can't borrow against it, that's why they can buy school buses. You just simply don't own it. Just had to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am painfully, not painfully, just well-aware based on the amount of people who ask us about school stuff during public comment that we have nothing to do with the school district. Thank you. Mr. Philian.
Hi, my name's Leo Philian, 3 Lafayette Ave. When I made my presentation in a deliberative session, I stated my proposal recommended a wellhouse and treatment facility on a Macintosh property similar to the Sill and Bennett wells. And after I made my presentation, I sat down, and where I was sitting down, I could not hear anything that was said that night. The cussing was so bad in the hall. Few weeks later, when I listened to the deliberative session on TV, I heard the water superintendent state that there's no land on a Macintosh well site to put a wellhouse in treatment and more land would be, have to be purchased. One of us lied. I have your deasement recorded at the Rockingham Registry, Book 510, Page 286, and it says, whereas the grantee has requested the town and the grantor of Macintosh has agreed to grant to the benefit an easement for construction, installation, use, maintenance, repairs, improvements, and replacements for water line, 400-foot well radius easement, and access easement to provide ingress and egress, related appearances, plus any other permitted reasonable necessary for grantee to construct, install, use, repair, improve, and replace a well, a pump house, water lines that he used now in the future by the grantee for the purpose of the public drinking supply on a grantee possible in the approximate area described herein and identified on the plan entitled Conservation Easement Plan for the Nature Conservancy. This shows a 50-by-50-foot building set on that site around the well. If you look at that Conservation Easement Plan that was made out, it does show a 50-by-50 building. This building, and also the town easements and water rights granted and conveyed therein, shall become permanent perpetual without the need for the grantee to make future such payments in order to enjoy the full benefits of the town easements and water rights. This 50-by-50-foot size building allowed there is over six times greater than either our Sill or Bennett wells. The Sill and Bennett wells are 380 square feet, and the easement that we have for a building is 2,500 square feet. So, to say that we, there's no area to be put a wellhouse and treatment on a plan is definitely not true. Another issue I guess I'd like to bring up, I was on the Water Resources Board of the Master Plan a while back, the Water Resource Chapter, and one of the municipal drinking water supplies, the number-one recommendation was consider establishing a Water and Sew Utilities Advisory Committee, or Citizens Advisory Committee, to insist in the role of monitoring and managing available water and sewer supplies and increase demand for municipal water service. This committee would work closely with Capital Improvement Committee, Water and Sew Superintendent, Town Administrator, Planning Board, Town Council to develop conservation measures and consider growth management policies to guide and plan for the most effective use of the town's water and sewer facilities. This, all, most all, Portsmouth, Rochester, Exeter, they all have Water and Sew Advisory Committees. I talked to Administrator about this a while back. And these people would do basically what the previous Water and Sew Boards do. When there's any recommendation coming up, they would study it, they would spend time on it. You people just do not have the time to go through all this stuff, but you would have a committee similar to the previous Water and Sew Board, they would go over all the recommendations, look at the data and everything, and report back to you. I think this is an important study that really would help you people. The last council started in good discussions about fairness and everything on water and sewer, and they ran out of time and kicked the ball down to you people. And it looked like you people kicked it into the bushes because there don't seem to be any more discussions continuing from last year's discussions about water and sewer. And I think it's important, and I think you people felt it was important, because if we continue on the path we're on now, we're just sitting, listening to salesmen come in and tell us what we should buy and everything. Within 10 years, our water and sewer bills are going to be higher than our property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. Other public comment?
Tony Wannstein, 275 Ash Swamp Road. I have a statement that I'd like to read. Last week, a town councillor posted a statement on Facebook that I believe was incendiary and inappropriate, which he then followed up with an email to me. I first want to point out that Facebook is not the appropriate venue to conduct town business, nor is it the forum to resolve town problems. We need people who will bring us together, not continue to divide our community. That's what leadership is to me, and that is what I expect from our elected officials. I am excited by how far the school and town have come in working together and am hopeful that efficiencies can be expanded. I wish that everyone could take a step back to recognize and celebrate the progress we have made while we continue to move forward, rather than lament what hasn't been done yet. But tonight, I'd like to put the school facility crisis in front of you, the town councillors. You are leaders in our community, and though you are not school board members, this is the single largest decision that our community will make, and I believe it will make, it will take everyone's participation in the process to make a solution work. This is a community problem, and a solution for our facilities will affect our entire community. But a real solution won't be easy. A real solution will involve working with the school board and Dr. Hayes on this complicated issue. A real solution will involve educating yourselves on the concerns of everyone in Newmarket. A real solution will involve understanding the limitations of the current junior-senior high school building. A real solution will involve trying to understand the dynamics of our relationship with Oyster River and Durham. A real solution will involve understanding the cost associated with a tuition agreement in both the short and long term. A real solution will involve having conversations with the architect about the requirements involved with building a school. A real solution needs facts. I do not expect everyone to agree on the correct course of action. Some of you have publicly stated that you do not support tuitioning, and some have stated that you do not support a new school building. I do, however, expect people to search out the facts and stop spreading misinformation. As a member of this community, I have to say that doing nothing is unacceptable. I expect our community to act on this issue, and I urge you all to be more involved in the process.
Any other public comment?
I have one.
Oh, you're just giving that to us, yeah. One sec. Mr. Allen, let's make sure everyone else is headed up. Anyone else want to say anything? Count up, John, you got five minutes.
Draw the attention to the council of the Town and Newmarket Master Plan, August 2001, section groundwater resources for the important vote coming up. Standard drift of aquifers. They did a study that backed on 2001. A recent study conducted by the EPA indicated that groundwater levels in the aqua were dropping steadily from year to year and by the year 2010 could reach critical levels where wells may no longer be usable if the amount of withdrawal was not reduced. A study by, and it gives the people, focused identifying the contributing areas. Well, we're only off by three years, but exactly what the water superintendent was saying has happened, and your study was done in telling you ahead of time in August 2001. Figured I'd bring your attention to page nine of that, which is a critical study already showing that exactly what you need to do on that vote to get that water in is right there, right in our master plan for the study. And it said it would happen. He's said what the height is, confirms exactly what the engineer is saying.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? I will close public comment at 7:17. Next item on the agenda, well, there's no public hearing today, right? Even though it's on the agenda. Town Council to Consider Acceptance of Minutes from February 20th, 2013 Workshop. Counselor Carmichael is not here. I'm assuming it's Vice Chair Bentley here.
The button works.
Yeah. I think I'm the only one left that works.
I wouldn't spill confidence. Make a motion to accept the February 20th, 2013 workshop minutes.
Second? Or is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, thank you. Ah, discussion. Seeing no discussion, Mr. Administrator, the vote.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Counselor Branch?
Aye.
Counselor Zink?
Aye.
Counselor Bentley?
Aye.
Counselor Mizrau?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. I will accept the motion on the February 20th, 2013 non-public minutes.
Motion to accept the February 20th, 2013 non-public minutes as written.
Second.
Anyone have any discussion on that?
Which we can.
I know, we have to go into non-public after. Mr. Administrator, the vote.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Counselor Branch?
Aye.
Counselor Zink?
Aye.
Counselor Bentley?
Aye.
Counselor Mizrau?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Next item on the agenda, Report of Town Administrator. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First thing I want to review with the council is the snow budget. With the amount of snow we've been having, receiving this winter, we've been continuously monitoring the budget. Like the Town Council, where of two areas that the budget has gone over. Salt has been over expended by $17,175, and contracted winter equipment is over by $6,425. Also, buildings ground overtime is over by $5,158 as of February 27th. Luckily, overtime for regular staff is not a concern at this time. With the amount of snow we've been receiving and the lengths of the storm, we could have been much worse off. We will be applying for assistance from FEMA for the blizzard when that becomes available. If we do not receive reimbursement for some storms, we will reduce expenses in other areas to make up the difference. So, I just want to, and again, of course, we're going to have another storm probably this end of this week, so we'll be continuing to monitor that as well. Just for the winter equipment rental, a lot of that is for the removal of the snow in the downtown area, because we actually need to rent crews to come in and remove that just because of the volume. Next item is that the water superintendent has been reviewing used vehicles for the department as the council requested. He found two on the entry, but to add the utility body and plow package, the price would not be, would not be much less than the new vehicle as priced by the state. Actually, one vehicle would actually come in more. The other issue is that used vehicles are only available for a short time, and we need to react at a moment's notice. The council would have to authorize the town administrator and other individual to purchase the vehicle without knowing the actual vehicle with a not-to-exceed price. I know we've been receiving input as well, and the water superintendent is looking at other options for vehicles.
Such as?
I received an email from Counselor Branch.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Through me.
Through you. Sorry. And he is looking into that, so I just want to make sure you guys are aware that we are continuing to look at that. So, well, I put a recommendation in there, we're going to hold off on that for now, and we'll probably come back in a few weeks with more information.
Okay, so you're looking at that option?
Absolutely. We're looking at everything. As the council is aware, we've been hearing a number of issues for pedestrian safety in the area of the mills. This week, we installed two blinking pedestrian crossing signs at the top of the hill, heading south on 108 towards the downtown, and heading north right in the area of the main entrance to the mills to try to get better idea where the crosswalks are, and we also have the traditional signs on the other side just to make people aware that they're there. And I've been hearing a number of comments thanking town for putting those in there, so we are working on that area to make sure. Another item we're going to look at is the way we paint it in the summertime when we can repaint it, see if there's other items that we can do, such as different types of crosswalks or different types of signage. So, we have to take that seriously and continue to look at it. Just a reminder that the town election, it will be on Tuesday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. You will need to schedule times for, to work at the polls, and I'll need a majority of the council to be present at the closing of the polls to certify the vote. The next item, we're working with Stratford Regional Planting Commission and the State Department of Transportation to move forward with an $850,000 project to increase the size of the bike lanes on Route 108 to the Newfields Town Line. This project is 100% funded through the state. The town will have to front the funds and reimburse by the state. This project was awarded the town about, I believe, about 2000, 2001, and we were at risk of losing it due to inactivity from the town. I met with the representatives from the state today, and we'll be sending a letter in to request to extend the timeframe to 2015 to finish the project so we can have some more time.
And we are, sorry.
No, go ahead.
We are considering timing any water projects that would involve.
We have discussed that with them.
Right, good.
One of the issues there is, which they even, since this is federal money, they're concerned that we'd have to follow, and they're going to look into it for us, that we may have to follow the federal requirements for, Davis Bacon requirements for our project since we're receiving some of the money for the other part of the project.
Just because they're ripping, even though they're going to rip the road up in the first place.
And trust me, I went around on this for a while, on this, they're going to double, they're going to look into it, see what we can do, yes. And I even said, I go, so does that make sense that you may have to reopen the road after we've already done it? And they agreed, the state agreed and said, no, we don't agree, we think it makes more sense to do it all at once, but the federal requirement would be that we'd have to pay more to meet the Davis Bacon requirements, and it'd be cheaper for us to open it twice. And I said, that doesn't make any sense, come back to me with the information, that's the federal regulations out there. The next item is that the McAllen Dam Committee met on Friday, February 28th, and interviewed engineering firms to study the impacts of the various options the town has relating to the dam. They will have a proposal for the town council in April. We've also received the dam breach analysis from Wright-Pierce. While we are still reviewing the document, it does put in perspective the cost of addressing the dam. The current estimates would see a high amount of $4.6 million to refurbish the dam, or a low of $1.1 million to, there's two options, either to remove it completely or to reduce the height of it. The analysis that the dam committee is soliciting would look at repairing the dam, lowering the dam, and eliminating the dam and the cost. I attached it for the council's information to review. On my unwritten report, on the agenda tonight, there is a resolution to withdraw money from the Building Maintenance Fund to paint the interior of the town hall. We have begun painting some of the town offices with current staffing, because I, just the reason why I'm giving the heads up, because you may smell paint and see it, that those are the smaller offices. The reason why we have to go for the larger project is the scaffolding and the stairwells and the safety concern trying to redo that. We are working with the schools, and the schools will be paying a percentage of it as well so they can have their hallways prayed, done at the same time. So, I just want to give the council a reason why we use smelling the paint, because our own stat, buildings and ground crew is doing it in between the storms on their lull in the season so we can get some of it done. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair.
Questions for the Administrator? I have one. On the Newfields Bike Lane, once it's completed, who's responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep of it?
That would be District 6, so the state.
District 6, okay.
That's correct. Anything above and beyond a certain level, for example, they will probably just put the fog lines in, in the center, in the center lines, and if we wanted to put special, you see them now with the bike symbol in the lanes, the town would have to pay for that, the state wouldn't go to do that, but the regular maintenance would be, it'd fall into District 6.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I really, of all the infrastructure that this town needs, I have to say, $850,000, it just seems absurd. It's absurd. I mean, especially if this money could be used for the, you know, the down-crown crossing, the bridge we're looking at, and I mean, just earmark for that.
And sadly, it's, right.
I know that, I know that, but I just.
We can't, it's not, it's not our money. This is federal and state money that they want to do the project, it just has to come through the town as part of the process. We can't use it for anything else. And the $850,000 number is estimates for 2002 numbers, so odds are the length of that project is going to be shorter because of the cost of doing it now.
That's all I have.
Yeah.
Other comments, questions?
Just a quick comment on the lights. I've never seen such nimbleness on the part of the municipality to respond to getting something done. I think it's great. I think the likelihood of somebody getting hurt down there was really a big deal. So, whoever on the staff made that happen, great job.
Ms. Levy?
Just a couple of quick ones. On the building and grounds overtime that you were talking about, it's on page 22 of our packet. You stated that luckily overtime for the regular staff is not of concern at this time? So, I was just wondering, is that interpreted that the regular staff overtime is down?
It's, it's not, looking at the rates, we're not, I'd be more concerned that we'd be over for the Public Works Department because of the number of hours they've been out there plowing. But we're not, we're actually, we're not down, we're just not over the budgeted amount.
Okay.
So, compared to a lot of other communities, we're doing pretty well in that area.
One other, just a couple. Do you want me to?
Thank you.
You, we were talking about the truck earlier, and I think it's great if we, if this is another option. They did say one of the options was to repair the truck, so I just figured I'd ask, did we ever get a number to repair it?
I'd have to talk to the water and sewer superintendent, but.
Because it was in the packet, it said something about, with both these issues, yada, yada, yeah, hold on. We could repair it in order to get it inspected, so I'm not suggesting one way or another, I'm just asking the question, has anybody gotten a number?
You know, I may have.
The last report we had is that it was.
I think I may have said could not.
Couldn't be repaired.
I may have made an error.
It's frame damage.
Right.
That's, that's why it's really not fixable.
Just so, I just like the general, the rest of the council knows, the other option that's being looked at is to do a vehicle swap to get a new, cheaper, two-wheel-drive vehicle that can be used for another purpose that's, that a current 4x4 is being used for, and then switch to 4x4 and plow.
Well, just, just so I, maybe I misread it, but what it said is, I would have to recommend to the council to either approve a new truck, or we put the issue to rest and repair the current vehicle in order to get it inspected.
Yeah.
So, I just figured, I'm not suggesting, I'm just asking, did anybody get a number? So, that's my.
I may have misspoke, I apologize.
Okay. And just the bike lane thing, real quick, if they're going to reimburse us, where's the money coming from upfront? And are we going to have to pay interest? And what's the deal?
That's what we'll have to look at once we get further down in the project. It would have to be a situation where we use town funds and get reimbursed at this point in time, but I'll have to look at all our options.
Would we need a loan for that?
That's what I'll have to talk to finance about.
And if we, if we did get a loan, would they reimburse us for the interest?
I doubt it. I'm not sure, but I doubt it, if we had to get a loan.
Okay. That'll do it.
Again, this is, and I just want to make sure people know, I'm just putting a foot in the door to have the placeholder again before we get anything like that, this would come before the council.
There's a lot of work to be done.
Absolutely.
That's just that the money was going to go away if we didn't stick our foot in the door.
No, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to make sure, you know, if we, I didn't know what the, if it's 800 grand or whatever our portion is, where's that coming from?
Right.
You know? I don't think.
And I don't want to be one to use the money and then, you know, we run out, we don't have money and we're waiting for reimbursement either, so we'd have to make sure we have more than enough.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Seeing none, we will move on to all business. Orders and resolutions in the second reading, and by title only, and we have option to act on these this evening. Resolution, first one is Resolution 2012-13-45, appropriation of $60,000 from the wastewater department surplus to the wastewater legal capital reserve fund. Want to entertain a motion or discussion?
Where are we, on page 45?
Counsel Branch?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2012-2013-45, appropriation of $60,000 from wastewater, wastewater department surplus to the wastewater legal capital reserve fund.
Second. Motion is second, is there discussion?
I have a question about it.
Yes.
It says in that, toward the end of that document, whereas, it's on page 46, just let me find it, please. Okay, it's the third whereas from the bottom. Whereas 35, semicolon, seven provides that said fund would be financed, in quotations, principally by sewer rentals, in quotations, close quote, which shall be established only from the surplus, sewer rentals, et cetera. Can, can you just define principally, is that?
State law, that's not our word.
Was that defined specifically from, or mostly from?
That is a specific quote from state law, so.
Okay, I just wanted to know what it meant by principally, is that like, you know, when it, when it said principally, I'm sure it's language that we were given, but I guess what I'm asking, is it, is it mostly going to be from sewer rentals? Is that how you read it?
Yes, it's from sewer fees.
That was my, that's it, thanks.
Counsel Zink?
And this is, am I correct, this is approval of funds that have already been expended?
Yeah, that's correct.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Minister of the Vote?
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Counsel Branch?
Aye.
Counsel Zink?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Counsel Mizaro?
Aye, motion passed, six to zero. Next resolution is 2012-13-46, withdrawal of $77,031.41 from the wastewater legal capital reserve fund. Want to entertain a motion or discussion?
Counsel Branch?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2012-2013-46, withdrawal of $77,031.41 from the wastewater legal capital reserve fund.
Second. Motion is second, discussion. Counsel Levy?
Maybe Sean can answer this, but I was just curious, it said the town has incurred $77,000 legal fees associated with this permit. Is that, do we know how much has been the total for all this? Do you have an idea, Sean, just to ballpark, what, what the town spent on the illegal? Was it?
If I break it down.
Could you?
We, to date, we have, and this actually includes, there's actually another, a little bit more outstanding that's come in since then.
From who?
For the coalition, we spent approximately $112,000 since April 5th, 2010, and we spent $40,000 as part of the coalition, as part of the modeling and memorandum of agreement, and we've spent, since March 27th of this year, billing to December 10th, or actually to this date, for divine millament of approximately $92,000. So the total is about $244,611 total for everything.
What was the total again, please?
$244,611.
$244,611. Counsel Zink?
And could you just define the categories again, not the amounts, but just, I think you talked about four, three or four categories.
Three categories. One was the coalition, which was for John Hall and we, it was UNH, but we also did the study there to help boost our effort to, for transparency and nutrients, and that was an item that was voted on separately, which was $40,000. And then, the last item was divine millament for negotiations and representing us.
For our final settlement.
For our permit.
For our final permit and settlement.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so that we would normally incur, that was just part of the process? Is that correct?
Yes.
Counsel Zink?
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions, counselors?
Just to.
I have one, too. The, so I know that we have voted multiple times, I think it was during non-publics, for the lawyer fees, or not non-publics, non-meetings, I think, maybe, for like, authorizing how much we were going to spend, is before you were here.
Okay.
How much we were going to spend, how much you're going to authorize to expend on legal fees? And I know we did a few of them, I'm not sure what those numbers add up to, I guess my concern is, are we expending things, then coming to us to ask for authorization to expend? Or have we authorized all these legal expenses at one point or another, and it's added up to this $244?
I guess I'm trying to figure out how you're trying to say that, I mean.
Have we voted on numbers that add up to this $244 in previous times? Not to move from the wastewater capital reserve fund and all this stuff, just to authorize the expenditure of this much.
For example, that, did they put, did the council put a limit on how much we were going to spend for the coalition communities?
We did vote it, I know, the number we voted on was a hard number not to exceed, I don't remember what it was.
I don't believe we exceeded any of those numbers. Some of this stuff was, when I put these numbers in, were trying to say, how do I want to say it? These numbers were being paid, some of these numbers were paid before, didn't all come out of the legal fund. All the numbers that I have here were approved through you guys. Some of them were approved by the town administrator prior, when we first entered into the coalition. And then we went into a spot where we started to come to the council for the, when they started to become big numbers.
Can we just get, can we just get confirmation at some point?
Yeah.
That we did not exceed anything that the council initially had authorized legally?
Yep.
Counsel Levy?
I, a friendly amendment, a little humor. Could we get an audit, like, what we voted on? Because I remember voting against one of them, I can't remember which one, so, can we just see, like, just in our next packet, just a, something totally synopscized, as far as all the votes we took, they were all public votes, to my memory, they weren't voted non-public. Just so we can get a handle on all this, because I didn't know that we were north of 220, you know, honestly, I, I think we kind of lost count, because we were just trying to keep up with it, and at this point, it's sort of a, one under the bridge, so to speak, but it would be nice to know what we actually voted on, and that the number, you know, to Phil's point, is consistent with the final number. And wait, and one last thing, you, you said, there's more to come. How much more?
There's approximately $10,000 left.
From whom?
From divine millament.
That would be from Dana, for.
Yeah, because there's, he's still working on the permit now. There was still some stuff, outstanding things that he's working on to finalize.
That's what I was going to say, that we're not done with divine millament. This, that process is going to be continuing, I would say almost until the project is finished, to make sure we're negotiating and complete with the EPA, because we need an environmental attorney for that. You're not going to be seeing the bills for $70,000, or the amounts that you were seeing before we were negotiating with the EPA, but we still need the legal advice through divine millament and Dana for the permitting process. For example, we received a letter this week from the EPA that our permit has been suspended for the nitrogen levels because of the appeal of the cities of Dover and Rochester. We need to make sure our attorneys are still reviewing that, of what we can and can't do during this time, through their, their legal process. So we still have, we still have some costs that are going to be out there, just not the amount you saw when we're doing the initial negotiations.
Okay, so, just to, just to be clear, whatever we voted on is great.
Yep.
And then if you could separate whatever the former town administrator authorized that the council may not have voted on, if, just so we see a complete auditing, just so we know.
I think that's reasonable for us to have, for our records, if nothing else. Counsel Branch?
I guess I'm a little confused on, on how we, we got to be able to expend these funds. If my recollection is right, we were actually in non-meetings with legal to discuss all this process, and I do, I personally don't recall specific votes in public to expend money, and being a non-meeting, I'm sure there's no minutes. So I guess I'm a little.
We would not have voted in a meeting, though, right? It would have been a non-public type of vote.
There was, there was, there was only one vote that I remember, and that was for $50,000.
I don't know.
And that was $40,000 to do the memorandum agreement, and $10,000 to go to John Hall for, at that point in time. Otherwise, I don't remember, we talked ballparks of what it should be, but there was no votes, and there was no set amount on what it was going to be. That's clearly what I remember. If I'm, I mean, what Sean is saying, I tend to agree. I think that, you know, Dana and whomever were sitting there, and we were discussing it, and we just, you know, they told us the direction that we should follow, and, you know, without a formal vote, I believe that we just said, you know, we're in, we've got to keep going.
I think it was the coalition money that we voted on, right? As I recall.
From my reading, the minutes, it was only the coalition.
Coalition money.
Yeah.
Which makes sense by some of the practice that legal fees would come through as a larger, or smaller bills, that probably was under the amount that a town administrator or somebody else could approve. You're seeing it now, because those built up and were asking to withdraw the funds to offset the money that was coming out of the operating budget.
At the end of the day, some of it would be, some are just projected versus actuals.
Yep.
Yeah, because if that's, just if that's the case, there was $112,000 based on what was set tonight on coalition, so if we only voted for 70, you know, just.
Yeah, no, and that's what we'd have to look at, what was spent before the vote of the council.
Yep.
And, and my brief recollection of it was, we, we were unsure, we were sure about our percentage of payment, but we were unsure about where, where the coalition was headed. So we never could have said a specific dollar amount.
Yes.
You projected it, you said, I think it will be this, and we're going to have to pay that percentage.
Correct, yes, and I, I believe we talked about a burn rate at some point in time.
Yes, yeah.
And we said that we really wanted to stay with the coalition, so we had to kind of accept that.
Yeah, I think that's right.
So.
Well, let's, you know, we can sit here all night and talk about conjectures, but just look at the real numbers that we have.
We will, we'll get that.
And I might just ask, if Steve could look at the non-public meetings, just in the event, one of them was a non, if, if there was a non-public that we ever had, we may have authorized money, just to, if someone can, because it would be nice to have an auditing of it, if we have it.
And just to, to make the council aware that a non-public is different than a non-meeting.
Non-meeting, yes.
I know.
A non-meeting, though, we would not have voted our money in a non-meeting, but a non-public, we've heard.
Right.
And that's why I'm asking to look at the non, non-publics.
Any other discussion on this?
At the, at the end of the day, this is a bill we have due right now.
Yeah.
And we need to figure out a way to pay.
Any other discussion? There's a motion on the table, so seeing other discussion, Mr. Minister of the Vote?
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Counsel Branch?
Aye.
Counsel Zink?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Counsel Mizaro?
Aye, motion passed, six to zero. Next amendment is, I don't know, amendment, ordinance is ordinance 2012-13-02, amendments to zoning ordinance, special use and mixed-use permits. Those people in the audience that are concerned about this, the council has given the administrator a fairly lengthy list of questions, mainly on economic ramifications of both revenue and expenditures associated with the type of development that this new zoning looks at, and he's in the middle of getting those. When do you expect that we'll get the answers to those?
I mean, because we'd also have to go to the consultant that we're.
Right.
I would say at least, I would say at the latest June.
That late.
Oh, yeah, because you've got to make sure, if we're making a serious decision, I want to make sure all the numbers are there, and answer any questions that we may have between that time. So, we've got to hand it, we've got to get that information to that individual, and he can do the research as well. It's not going to be a two-week.
Counsel Branch?
If I may ask the administrator, what's the process to table this item?
Just make a motion to table it.
I'd like to make a motion to table this item.
Second, discussion?
Just future to tables, non-debatable.
So it's non-debatable?
Yeah.
No, so there's a motion second. So we're just going to vote on it?
Yep.
All right, Counsel Wright, I'm sorry, Mr. Minister.
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
No debate?
No.
Aye.
Counsel Branch?
Aye.
Counsel Zink?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Counsel Mizaro?
Aye, motion passes six to zero. Expect to hear me ask about it every meeting.
In fear of nation, it will be under item C, where it says items laid on the table, until such time as a counselor makes a motion to remove it from the table.
And that requires a majority, so. Where's it under the table?
Yeah.
Mr. Bentley?
No, I was getting rid of number seven.
Next item on the agenda, new business correspondence, town council to consider nominations, appointments, and elections. There's one alternate for the ZBA, Richard Shelton, term to expire March 2014.
Motion to nominate alternate Richard Shelton for ZBA.
Second.
Term to expire March 2014.
Second. Glad Richie's back.
Mr. Shelton sent me an email saying that he's proud to serve the town again, but he is, really wishes, and I concur with him, that maybe someone a little bit younger would stand up and say that they actually want to serve the town a little bit. So, anyone else out there, there's a lot of open positions, and a lot of different boards and commissions, please step up and serve your community. Thank you.
Mr. Minister of the Vote?
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Counsel Branch?
Aye.
Counsel Zink?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Counsel Mizaro?
Aye, motion passed, six to zero. Next, our ordinances in the first reading, if the council would agree, the ordinance 2012-13-03, purchasing policy is fairly lengthy, would there be any objections to me reading that in title only? So it's ordinance 2012-2013-03, purchasing policy, and I would highly encourage people at home to go on the website and look at the actual purchasing policy. It's about 10 pages, and I would encourage people to take a look at it, so that when we have public comment, people can let us know what they think. Next item, next ordinance in the first reading is Resolution 2012-13-48, approving the community revitalization tax relief incentive, RSA 79E, for the redevelopment of the Lang Blacksmith Shop. Whereas Acadia Engineers and Constructors of 90 Main Street, New Market, New Hampshire, has submitted an application for the community development revitalization tax relief incentive for the Lang Blacksmith Shop located at 13 Water Street. And whereas, the developer is proposing $1,707,390,000 of construction improvements to 13 Water Street. And whereas, this is over the threshold of 15% of the pre-rehabilitation assessed value, or $75,000, whichever is less. And whereas, the improvements equal more than 50% of the current assessed value, allowing three years of tax relief according to town policy. And whereas, the town council determines that this project qualifies for the incentive under RSA 79E, the project is substantial and is there, and there is a public benefit on this project. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the New Market Town Council does hereby approve Acadia Engineers and Constructors of 90 Main Street, New Market, New Hampshire, RSA 79E, community revitalization tax relief incentive application in accordance with the previously adopted criteria, and authorize the town administrator to execute any associated agreements. First reading, March 6th, 2013. Will not have comment on that, because this is the first.
When, Phil, when would, excuse me.
The second reading would be the next meeting.
And that's when we would discuss theoretically, okay.
When we would discuss.
Thank you.
And suspend council rules if we wanted to vote.
Will all this same information be in that pack? Okay, thank you.
All right, next item, if we can get there on my packet, is...
Painting.
Resolution 2012-13-49, authorizing the withdrawal of $11,500 from the Building Capital Improvement Capital Reserve Fund for the painting of Town Hall. Whereas the Town Hall hallways and stairwells are in need of paint, and whereas the Director of Public Works solicited bids to paint said hallways, and whereas, the Newmarket School Department has agreed to pay for their hallways to be painted at the same time, and whereas, the Town of Newmarket has previously established Building Improvement Capital Reserve Fund containing $343,723 in it, and whereas, the qualifying bid is $11,500 for the town portion of the project and $2,950 for the school portion of the project, for a total amount of $14,450. Now therefore, let it be resolved, the town council does hereby authorize an amount not to exceed $11,500 to be withdrawn from the Building Improvement Capital Reserve Fund for the painting of Town Hall. First reading, March 6, 2013. Again, comment and debate on that, or next meeting?
You mean next meeting?
Next.
Is it next week?
April 3rd.
Two weeks.
April 3rd. Because the two weeks is the workshop.
Is the workshop.
Right, the next business meeting.
Next item on the agenda is correspondence to the Town Council, letter from Kelly Hardy. Mr. Administrator, do you want to...
Sure. February 25, 2013, to Newmarket Town Council. My name is Kelly Hardy, a Newmarket resident, homeowner of 5 South Street. I have been in correspondence with Diane Hardy, head of the Newmarket Zoning Board, to determine if I need to apply for variance or special exception in order to renovate the third floor of my house to an efficiency apartment. At this time, parking is the only issue preventing me from applying for the special exception. I'd like to rent two parking spaces from the Newmarket Town Hall in order to meet the special exception requirement stating each unit on the property needs access to two parking spaces within 500 feet of the property. Absent of the ability of rent, to rent two spaces from Town Hall, would you consider granting me an easement off the Town Hall parking lot to the rear of my property so I may add parking spaces on my own land? Please refer to the attached site map for a better understanding of my request. Thank you for your time and consideration. Kelly Hardy, 5 South Street, Newmarket, New Hampshire, 5757.
I could have read it, I was going to ask if you wanted to provide any information.
Sorry. Well, I thought you maybe you read enough of them tonight, so...
Wow, we got on this guy.
For information, I did talk with Mr. and Mrs. Hardy about their plans. I wasn't sure of what the council's opinion would be of renting or leasing spaces at a certain monthly rate or annual rate to them to do so. My concern on an easement would be if we were to ever do something to the property back there, we would have to renegotiate to break the easement, for lack of a better term, if we ever wanted to build an expansion or something for the town offices, that it may be easier to have, enter into a lease to do so. We do have, you know, it would have to remain at two parking spaces because of, perfect example, next Tuesday, we would have an election and all, we'd have issues with parking at this facility, just to make sure we have enough for our normal events, plus if we have an event and there may be some event at the church, parking would be an issue. I just wasn't sure what the council's feeling may be on leasing parking spaces. I guess I'm trying to get a sense.
Let's find out, Counsel Branch.
Steve, is there a difference between an easement and a right-of-way?
Good question. I would say, I believe there is, I believe a right-of-way, you actually, the individual owns the land underneath the line, whereas an easement, you have the right to go over the property. But I'd have to double check.
Okay. Yeah, that's the only question I've got, thank you.
Counsel Zink?
Yeah, probably taking this a step too far, but let's say, it's probably a planning board issue, but if the town were to decide not to rent the two at some point in time, would the unit that not qualify?
Correct.
So it, I, okay.
Counsel Wright?
Now, where exactly are these parking spaces at the town back there? How many parking spaces do we have total?
We have about 50 of them right now, I believe, I have to double check. Chief, do you have a, no?
I guess one of my main concerns is just a set of premises. And we are short of parking spaces as it is, you know, it's...
Well, parking in this area is not an issue as much as it would be if we're talking the downtown area. If anything, that's what I would, I would encourage more parking on the parking lots we have in this end of the downtown versus some of the, in-town for various groups such as businesses and stuff, so. Yeah, there's not, I don't see as much of an issue here as if we were closer downtown.
Counsel Levy?
Well, there were two things brought up, so I'll address them separately. How, I think you said, how does the town council feel in general about renting or leasing parking spaces? With a little bit more information, I might be very in favor of that. I think it was stated to me that the town owns, and correct me if I'm wrong, parking across from Bryant Rock on Bay Road, the parking behind Town Hall, which we're talking about now, and then there's parking on the south side of 152, across from Town Hall. Sort of right? So, you know, I, I think if we could evaluate those three spaces, somebody could, you know, and it may be in the parking study that was done, I haven't had a chance to look at that yet, but based on how much parking we have, it might be a good way for the town to maybe get some revenue and give some relief to parking either in the downtown or in the general area. So that's just my opinion on parking. As far as this is concerned, if we, the easement, just so I understand better, how much room would she actually be needing out of the back there for two parking spaces? Do we have a, is it a square footage issue, is it?
The easement would actually not be the parking spaces themselves, my understanding would actually to be, to get access to their own property in the back to create parking spaces.
So she'd be driving through our property to get there?
Exactly.
Okay. So that goes to Mike's right-of-way, sort of?
Right.
So, and I'm just asking, and that's because she need, and I apologize for my ignorance, but this is just not my, my focus. She needs two more parking spaces in order, and she has the room, she just, they can't get to it. Is that the deal?
Correct.
So, could the town come up with either a right-of-way, if that's sort of less permanent in a sense? Although if we took away the right-of-way, then I guess, you know, that causes an issue. But is there anything the town, if we sold her the easement or gave her relief with an easement, right? What would the downside of that be? I guess that's what we, we need to know. What would we possibly do that would circumvent her ability to use that area? I mean, that would help me make the decision in order to do that, number one. And lastly, if she only needs two parking spaces, I'm assuming those are for tenants?
Right.
You know, and I don't know if that has to be on the property, I'm assuming they just need two parking spaces for the people she wants to rent to up above?
Correct, they need designated parking, correct, they have to identify it.
So if, and so just in closing, if the town did decide to use some of the parking lots that we have, we wanted to rent spaces, could we possibly say to that individual, "We have a couple of spaces on the other side of 152, if you need two spaces to address your apartment, you could rent those spaces from the town, and as long as you rent them from the town," I mean, is that a possibility or is that...
I think the issue there is, there's a certain amount of distance, it has to be from the actual apartment.
Vomitable.
Right. So I've got, we'd have to almost measure to see about the 152 situation.
Okay, so then I, I guess I would need to know what possible reason could the town, where could the town get hurt if we did grant an easement, and is there a financial remuneration to the town for an easement grant? That's what I would want to know before I made a decision.
Vice Chair? Well, now, I'd echo the right-of-way versus easement question. I think it was my biggest one. The other is, I mean, there's, there's a precedent that when we owned the parking lot at a library, we were leasing spots already. So this is not something that's like out of the world, that we have had no, no experience with before.
Okay.
So, we, if that warrant article passes, we won't have a place to put the money, like, capital reserve fund. Any other comments?
Just one last thing, just since we're discussing a little, if we did rent spaces, which I'm in favor of to some, some extent, but I want to know the, you know, the negatives. And then we have a vote for Town Hall and stuff of that, you know, for, for election. How, what would happen then, potentially, Steve, if, you know, if we had permitted spaces or we were renting spaces?
Sorry, I'm Kelly.
Yeah, oh, are you the owner?
Yes.
Okay, does council have an issue with... No, no, I understand.
Sorry. I just wanted to bring up if there was an issue, especially with set days, we can actually fit four cars in our parking, in our driveway. So, if there were set days, I would be totally open to telling the tenants they can't park there, they can park in our driveway. Those spots just don't technically count because it would be one car parked behind the other, so two cars side by side. So, I'm just saying, I'd be open if there were set days that you did not want us to park there.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add to this?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
I guess my, just, just if maybe Steve could answer the question, my, my question, if we did rent spaces and then the town had an election, and we needed the additional parking, is, is that a complete dilemma?
Now, we could solve it.
So we could work around that?
Yeah. I mean, odds are, what we would do is maybe some town employees would park at the 152 lot.
No, what I'm saying is, let's say we rented spaces to people like we used to at the library, and then all of a sudden the town...
You're talking about broader than this.
Yes.
You're talking about renting.
Yeah, renting or, you know, and, and then we have an election and we're going to need all the spaces, is there a way...
We'd have to look at it, try to determine.
That's a, I, I get where you're going, but that's a much bigger question.
Well, no, I understand that.
So, I will look up the right-of-way versus easement and discuss it with the property owners to come up with a...
Okay.
And I just wanted to get a sense.
Come to us with a recommended section.
Right, before I went too far into it, I wanted to see what you guys...
I mean, I see where Counsel Levy's going, and it is a conversation we have to have, it's just, I think this is not the...
No, it's fine. I figured since it was so early, we could talk a little bit more.
Well, you know what, we can talk about that in closing comments with our counselors, which is where we are at right now. So, we'll be able to have an action on that in the next two meetings.
Yes.
Closing comments from counselors. Vice Chair Bentley?
Couple, I'll go with one first. Wanted to congratulate the boys and girls basketball teams for both making the tournament and having a exciting, exciting games. Coach Hayes and Coach Edgley and the, the boys and girls, congratulations to them. And I'll hold my other one to see if other people have to talk.
I got a few, but let's see what other counselors have anything. March 20th, from 10:30 to 1:30, Meals on Wheels is inviting counselors to take a ride with them as they, as they deliver meals. I know Counsel Carmichael and Counsel Wright did it last year. As I understand from when you came back to the council with, it was a great experience. I will, I will be attending it, at least for a portion of it, depending on how I can open my schedule, but I will be there. So any of the counselors willing to, to be involved, either let me know or let Kim Tilton know, Sunrise Sunset Meals on Wheels. The other thing is, the election on March 12th, highly encourage everyone at home to please come up and show up, show up for the election. There's a lot of very important warrant articles, you've heard us talking about them for basically the last six months. So please show up for the election. I'm routinely disappointed by the amount of people that show up for local elections versus federal ones, even though local elections impact your life a lot more. So please come, as well as to the counselors, I expect full participation. Ballot counting time, so unless you have a real, real need to not be there, let me know. And people that want to be there during the day on the 12th, but again, we need two counselors there? Two counselors there throughout the day, so please let me know times you're available. Counsel Levy?
Couple things. Number one, the other evening, Counsel, Vice Chair Bentley was nice enough to spend some time with me to go over the, the list of attorneys. I guess they're very hungry for business because we have quite a list of our attorneys that have responded to the RFP. So we got through, I'd say probably two-thirds of it, we have about a third to go, and I just wanted to get some feedback at some point from the council as to whether or not they want us to call for references or if the council, how, you know, the council and town administrator would like to handle that. So that's one thing. And, and it was very productive and it was, it was, you know, it was great work and John on that, he had a lot to contribute. The other thing I thought that I just would bring up briefly is, because there's been a lot of confusion over all the, where our, all our tax dollars go, and Steve was nice enough to send me, which was kind of an eye-opener for me, the current tax rate, and where all our dollars go for the town, for the school, for the county, and the state. And anybody that's interested can, can get a copy of it from Steve or he can put it on the website, I think it'd be a good thing for people to see. The reason I'm bringing it up is because I am really confused, even though you tried to make it less confusing. The state share, so just, you know, for everyone's edification, the town side is about 20, 25%, the county is one, excuse me, is four, the, the school is about 59 and a half, and then the state school is 10. And so I, I was under the impression, like a lot of people, that the 10% that we raised that goes to the state, goes to the state and then comes back to us, and then Steve kind of educated me on that. And then the donor towns like, you know, Portsmouth and some other towns that have in the past been considered donor, allocate dollars, and then you explained to me that actually most of the towns are keeping the money.
Yeah, certainly.
Can you, for the edification of the public, because, you know, in town, we're, just to, so people know, all of our tax dollars that are collected at the end of the day, 70% school, about 25 is town, and four is county, which I don't know that everybody knew that. Can you explain where this 10% stays in the town and the towns that are more wealthy, how they keep it, and really what's happening there, so, so people understand?
Sure. The, back a number of years ago, late 90s, it was the infamous Claremont decision. And part of that was that the state needed to find what the cost of an adequate education was for students in the state. Right now, it's about $363 million statewide. They take, what they, they do then is take that 363, divide it up between all the cities and towns in the state, and set a statewide tax rate, which is right now, I believe is $2.16 per thousand. It started out at $6.60 per thousand, but that was reduced over time. When I say adequate education too, I do, I want to make this caveat, inadequate education is not what everybody thinks of as an education, it's not the, it's, it's not the basic cost of math, science, whatever we have, it wouldn't fund what everybody thinks of as, as the adequate education. So what they do is the state, put the statewide property tax in, we call it the state school tax, and the town needs to raise that amount by multiplying the, the rate per thousand valuation for the community. If we collect more than what the state determines that our local municipality needs for adequate education, that money is supposed to go to Concorde to offset what the difference would be if you're in a community that doesn't collect. We are actually a community that does not collect enough to meet our adequate education needs, so we would be considered a receiver town. You mentioned Portsmouth, some other communities, what you refer to as a donor town where their amount that they raise through their taxes is more than what would be needed to hit the adequate education level. So that difference would hypothetically go to Concorde and be divided up. However, they've been putting in stopgap measures not to have that happen for, I believe, about 10 years or so now. So while we, and what we do is, we don't actually send the money to Concorde, we just keep the money. Because of the fact that we don't, you know, we need to, need it anyways, it doesn't make sense to send it and just get it back from the state. So that money just stays and it goes back to the schools and goes into determination of how much money they, the overall schools need to raise. So, in a situation where the donor towns, they just keep, they do, they do the same, they just keep the money as is.
So is Newmarket receiving any additional...
We do receive some additional funds.
And where does that come from?
I believe it's just other grants that the state may have, or it's, it's in the form, it's in the determination of the formula, theirs is not as black and white as ours when we determine the tax rate, they have other revenue sources that offset their tax rate number of the, the 1412 of last year. So basically, it's just offsetting that number, it's not an actual, not always an actual check that comes in. It's just an offset of what they would have to raise through taxation. Yes, it is convoluted, but that's a system...
Yeah, I, I get where you...
Well, you know why I'm asking, because, and I don't want to...
No, go ahead.
The reason I'm asking is because if we're, you know, raising 10%, there's a lot of people in this community I don't think realize, maybe they do, but I didn't, that on top of what we're raising locally, there's another 10% that we're raising, if we need more money, I guess that's my question, where is it coming from? You're saying it's coming in, in the form of grants from Concorde?
Correct, or they just don't, they just offset, they offset the tax rate when they're setting it, it's not always cash in hand, they'll just offset...
So they'll reduce...
Correct.
In the spirit of the public comments that were made earlier, I, I think it would be great for any of us, just as residents and leaders of the community, to, at public comment at a school or meeting, ask those questions, or even just, just ask the questions of the superintendent or members of the school board.
And just, these numbers for, for the percentage breakdown of tax rate is not out of whack. of whack as, as other communities. Every community I've been in, it's usually rule, rule of thumb, it's about 60 to 70% is goes to education, 25% goes to the municipality, and the remaining usually goes to the county. So it's not...
It's within the realm of the normal across the state.
Absolutely, absolutely. If anything, I've seen is the town, the municipal, municipal portion, it may be larger, in larger communities that have more services, but this is usually about where it is, so.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Zink. Counselor Branch.
I had requested some information or, or wanted some information to be made public, and I went through the chair on this. And it's my understanding that we can allow this to be public in regards to property that we have taken?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if the town administrator could, so it's on rights, on the legal side?
Yeah, the, the town had to do agreement, I don't have all the history off the top of my head because I wasn't here during that time, for what's referred to as the Stevens property down near the train tracks area or the...
By the industrial park.
Industrial park, thank you. And while we, agreements was that after a certain amount of time, if it didn't, they didn't develop the property, we held the deed and we could record the deed that the town takes the property. We did that. It's been recorded, town owns that property now.
So we own Wilson and...
Correct.
Actually, I think it was the...
Hamel, thank you. Yeah. We just went, it was, the deed was actually signed, the original was in my desk, we just went down next day and filed it.
Yeah, quick, how many acres, Steve?
I don't know, it's off the top of my head. Sorry.
I can tell you're almost close.
Another piece of property, not collecting taxes on...
Between, it's around, what is it, like around 30 acres? Do you know? About 30 acres? I believe so, yes.
Got it, Counselor Branch?
That's it, thank you. Whatever it's worth, that's quite an accomplishment for, you know, as a side note. That property has been tied up for well over a decade. Well over, more like 20 odd years, so kudos to...
The council has done anything, it's clean.
Well...
It's not a bad thing.
Two things, one, I saw the parking study, Counselor Wright, thank you for getting everyone the 2006 parking study or 2000?
It's the last one.
It's the last one we had, and I will say, I know probably the next council's going to end up dealing with parking as one of its challenges. There's, even that's outdated already based on. And another thing, because I know the families have already been notified, the town report is out and co-dedicate two people in town, we lost this last year, is dedicated to Tito Bulia and Don Small, both great paragons of society and, and have done a lot for this town in their lifetimes. So their families will be here at the organizational meeting, the 18th, to receive copies of this, which will be awesome. So unless any counselors have anything else, we now have the new record for, for meetings.
Motion to adjourn.
Next meeting is March 18th at 7 o'clock, organizational meeting. 6 o'clock.
Which is a Monday, correct?
It's a Monday, the 18th, and...
The council designate pike out there.
Is 6 o'clock the public or is there not?
No, that's public.
Okay.
I have an issue with that, and that I won't be here.
Okay.
So that's the night we generally elect. So number one, I didn't know if by statute it has to be by state, by charter.
No, by charter, you have to be...
You have to meet what? The Monday before the first Wednesday or the Monday after?
Can I ask a question with respect to that, just because it would be nice if we were all here? And I know sometimes we suspend the rules, so I'm just going to ask. Usually that, I watched a meeting from last year, which was like, you know, a half hour, and, and it was, you know, it was a nice appropriate meeting, but it was fairly quick. Is there any way, and I'm just going to ask, that we could combine, because I think John's going to be back that Wednesday, and we're going to meet Wednesday as well, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any way we could combine that into one meeting, or is that completely ver boden?
It depends on what you're trying to do. You, one, no, you have to have two separate meetings.
Oh.
Because of the fact that it's not so much as the election of chairs, it's the swearing-in of the new counselors. So you will still need to have the March 18th meeting to have the swearing-in of the counselors. You can postpone the election of chair until Wednesday night, but you still need to have the election, the swearing-in of the counselors.
So you can't swear him in the same night as you then have?
No, the 18th is by charter, you have to swear him in that night.
I knew none of this, but I will be around the 18th or I won't be around the 20th.
Okay. But yes, you have to be, that's the rules. It's because, it's actually state law too, because you, you have to wait till after the recount period is over, which we know the odds are, it won't be a recount, but you have to wait till that, so that's that Monday.
So the option is?
Call you in.
We've done that before.
Yep.
Any other comments? This has been the longest comment period since I've been chair. I will now accept your motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.